Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on Monday, January 27, 2025. I now call the meeting to order, and I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the next item on tonight's agenda is the oath of office for the newly appointed planning commissioners and the reappointment of some existing planning commissioners. So, our city clerk, Brenda, will handle that. So, Brenda, why don't you come up and we can handle it, or however you would like. Oh, open for public comments then, for the newly appointed planning commissioners. Thanks, Brenda.
All right, good evening, commission. I wrote some things down related to the selection of Chair and the Vice Chair, so I wouldn't start rambling and run out of time. So, I want to heartily recommend, who I think should be a clear choice, Jeff Harland, to chair the Planning Commission. Not only does he have experience on the Commission, but on the City Council as well, obviously. He's quiet and wise, he's good at working civilly with others and finding middle ground, at keeping things moving along and on focusing on what matters. For Vice Chair, I recommend that you select David Martinez. He has an obvious and deep commitment to the future of the city. He has a clear record of going above and beyond and doing his homework on the items before him, and he understands how planning works and what the Commission's role is in the process. I would characterize him as a friendly and informed optimist. He's not out on social media taking shots and blaming and complaining, as so many do when they don't know what else to do. But he skipped that phase in his rise to leadership, and instead he puts his energy into more productive use, figuring out how things work, joining committees and serving on those, like the ATC, and physically going outside and making things happen. As an example of that, just yesterday, David led a walk around Sobeca, where half a dozen of us took a walk and asked ourselves, what's it like to be a pedestrian here? Are there simple changes that could make it more safe and comfortable to be here on foot, and what might those changes look like? That exercise that David led is an application of the Strong Towns approach, which is humbly observe where people are struggling and ask, what's the smallest thing that we could do right now to improve it? Who else in the city is doing stuff like that? And I think the only answer we could maybe say is Arlis Reynolds, she's the other one doing stuff like that. And for that reason, that's why I think David is the right kind of planning commissioner for our city, and I think that he would make an excellent Vice Chair. Thank you.
So, that item is actually the one after the oath, but we took all of your information for that. If you'd like to speak on the oath, you're welcome to come down. If not, I'll close the public hearing, and all the commissioners will go down now, Brenda, and accept their oath. Anybody else? I keep it open? Nope?
All right, if the newly appointed commissioners would please join me in front and center. Maybe line up here, along that side, so they can get pictures of you. I'll stand here. I don't want to be in front of you. Show up good. I don't want to be in front of anybody. All right. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you, Planning Commissioner of the City of Costa Mesa, solemnly affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Commissioners, and thank you for your service. The next item is the election of the officers, Chair and Vice Chair. The Chair nomination is essentially a five-step process. Just I'll go through it before we go through it for some of the commissioners who might not have been with a selection at this point. Step one is I'll be opening and closing the item for public comments. Step two is I'll request a nomination for PC Chair from the Commission. After nominations are completed, I will ask for a second for the nominations. And then the next step is after nominations and seconds are adhered, I will close the nomination and open the meeting for Commissioners' comments regarding the motion nominations for Chair. And then after that, I'll close the motion and Commissioner comment, and Anna will ask Anna to call for the question. So, with that, if there's no questions, I'll open the item for public comments.
Thank you. Commissioners, congratulations on your appointment. For some of you, welcome back. I got to tell you, for the last four years, your meetings have taken way too long. You haven't had sufficient meaty agenda items. I've watched other cities and had to dual-watch them, who've had four public hearings that get done before you guys have one. So, we really need now, in the appointment of the Chair and the Vice Chair, parliamentary folks that are experts, that can move a project along. I think we need to get your agendas well before Friday night, so that you and the members of public have the opportunity to digest it. I think that as Commissioners, it's unfair to you, it blindfolds you, it gives you no chance to interact with staff and ask important questions, and that requires you to come here and do it, because this is your only opportunity. We need to get better, we need to get more efficient. Separate topic about the agenda is, we don't have a public hearing tonight, after being dark since December. Not one, not one application is in front of you tonight. So, historically, in the Planning Commission, Commissioners have looked at those with tenure, that have the experience, that have the parliamentary experience. So, I think Commissioner Zick fits that bill. I also think highly of Commissioner Harland. When I was a Planning Commissioner, on several occasions, I championed Jeff to be a part of this Commission. I think he's very valuable, and you have a former Chair sitting up there. So, I think you have some really good choices, but I hope you'll be thinking about who's going to move these items along, who's going to have the public interest at heart, who's going to champion with staff to get higher productivity and to get better TESSA reports, to get this watermelon through the garden hose that is really challenged at this point. I mean, really challenged. You don't have one application tonight to hear. So, parliamentary experience is vital tonight, and that's the only thing that you should be looking at. Not who you like, not whose policies that you're championing, but who's going to be the best to run your meetings. And I think you have three qualified candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for your comments. The, so, closed public comments?
We have one public comment online.
Thanks, Anna.
Jimmy Vivar, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening, staff and Commissioners, new Commissioners. Welcome to the Planning Commission. It's an honor to be serving there, as I was for two and a half years, and the step of deciding who is going to be Chair and Vice Chair is a big one. And I agree with the previous speaker that it's more than about policies. I think it's about taking a balanced approach to things and working with others, and making that attempt to work with others and, and, yeah, and bringing a sense of professionalism and, and, yeah, and into the role. And so, I'd like to throw in my support behind Commissioner Zick. I really enjoyed serving with him, and I know that he served as Vice Chair in the past, and I think that Mr. Zick would bring a lot to the Chairship. And I think that Ms. Angelia Andrade Vallarta would also serve quite well in the position of Vice Chair, in bringing her knowledge and skills and as well being able to, you know, take that balanced approach, moderate approach to things. So, that would be my comment tonight, and good luck.
Thank you, Ex-Commissioner Vivar. Anna, anymore?
No, there is not.
Okay, I will request nominations for the PC Chair from the Commission. Open for nominations from the Commissioners.
Can we just say something?
Nominate Commissioners.
Do we want to go in a specific order, or raise your hand?
We could go in a specific order, or, Brenda, is it customary to go in order? That's usually the way that works. I don't know who turned on their light first. Do you want to try this again, so we could race, in case somebody doesn't know? How about we'll just go down the row? Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, I would like to nominate former Mayor Protim and former Vice Chair Jeff Harland to be Chair.
A second?
I'll second now.
Substitute motion?
Just substitute nomination, if you'd like.
Substitute nomination, I mean. Commissioner Zick for Chair.
A second? No second. Anybody else? Okay, no other nominations. So, I will close the nominations and open the meeting for Commissioner comments regarding the motion. Anyone? Start with Commissioner Martinez.
I think that Commissioner Harland has proven himself, time and time again, leading City Council meetings, and I'm sure during his time on the Planning Commission, has led a few Planning Commission meetings as Vice Chair as well, and I'm very honored to nominate him for the position of Chair.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rojas, do you have any comments?
I'll just echo Commissioner Martinez's comments, and I've heard nothing but good things about Commissioner Harland, and so I've had a few conversations and good feedback with it, so I think that's a good one.
Great, thank you. And any other Commissioner comments? Welcome. Since there's no more comments, I'll close the Commissioner comments and ask Anna to call for the question.
Sorry, just one moment. That motion carries 6-1, with Commissioner Zick voting no.
Thank you. So, at this point, the Chair, Commissioner Harland, Chair Harland, will now run the process for Vice Chair, Protim. I can help you through that if you'd like. Got the script already. Okay, thank you. I'd like to request nominations of the Commission for Vice Chair. Commissioner Klepak?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Zick for Vice Chair.
We have a second?
Second.
I'll second now.
Second by Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Klepak, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I agree with the thought that we should have somebody experienced that can move the meeting along. I agree that sometimes they can go on too long, and although I don't always agree with Commissioner Zick, I have a ton of respect for him, and I really appreciate the line of questioning and just his attention to detail. I think he'd make a fantastic Chair or Vice Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Rojas, any?
I'm going to echo that. I've sat here for the past few years next to Commissioner Zick, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for his decisions, although we haven't always seen eye to eye on anything. I consider him to be a very intelligent, very thorough, very professional individual, who, when he speaks, he speaks and makes his decisions impartial for the greater good of the community, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for Commissioner Zick, and I think he'd be a great Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Dixon?
I just, I think that we're going to be in really good hands with the Chair and Vice Chair, and I really support both Commissioners Zick very much for Vice Chair, and I think that we're going to have some great meetings. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. I'll echo those sentiments. I've served with Commissioner Zick a few years back. There's a fair amount of institutional memory on this dais, and I think he would serve capably in my absence, and I know him to be very thoughtful and an intelligent Commissioner, and I have confidence he could ably do the job. Okay, let's call for the question.
That motion carries 7-0.
Okay, great. Congratulations, Vice Chair. Let's take a quick break, three minutes for a change of the seats, and then we'll come right back. All right, we are back on. We have one presentation item tonight. That's a TESSA update, and it's presented by Economic Development Administrator Dan Inloes. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners, and newly appointed Chair, Vice Chair. This is exciting. Today, I'd like to give you an update on TESSA. This is our total electronic self-service application. Approximately five and a half years ago, we embarked on this journey to launch a new system through funding, setup, and then launch on August 21, 2023, of this new system that replaced a collection of outdated systems spread out throughout the entire city and created one unified digital platform that now serves over 14,000 customers. It supports tasks ranging from special event permits, all building permits, business licenses on all planning applications, and much, much more. We've successfully navigated the stabilization, optimization, user adoption phases. Our staff is becoming more and more familiar with how to use this system as a productive tool and providing feedback. We are learning more and more about how to update it and suit customer needs, and we're now very much in a maturity phase, where over the next two years, we will continue to implement updates and modifications to make it more and more customer-friendly. We've provided customers with increased access, greater transparency, ease of access, improved management of cases, and digital review and approvals, while a great deal was accomplished at GoLive when the system was first provided, and the public, several items were deferred, but have since been completed. Furthermore, as computer scientist Richard Pattis wisely said, "Design is a discovery process. As we implement, we discover new information." That is definitely the case in launching a new system that's replacing a 20-year-old system. Our staff of over 200 who use the system have had the opportunity to learn and transition from a paper-based process to TESSA. And with that, while it's taken time and training, they are continuing more and more to adopt TESSA and identify opportunities and features that can improve the system and improve customer service. This is seen in just plain facts. The building permit process, for example, the review times have improved by 30% since launch of TESSA. So, we, from application to submittal to final inspection, we've been, we've completed these 30% faster than we did when we first launched. We've conducted and completed a lot of tasks in this process. TESSA provides a seamless, public-facing system where users can manage all their applications through one platform. Customers can track their application history for the past 20 years, access zoning details, get contact information to communicate with staff assigned to their projects. Transparency and efficiency are at the core of TESSA's design, helping applicants stay informed and empowered at every step. We have seen this just in zoning verification letters, which have seen a decrease in 66% due to the system's map interface that allows applicants to look up their own zoning districts, general plan, land use information, search partial case history, and look at dozens of other geographic layers. There are clear instructions and helpful tips on how to proceed. Actions and workflow steps are color-coded. Actions that require the applicant's attention are red, and when tasks are completed, they turn to green. Since the system GoLive, we have accomplished a great deal as well. We have continued to make improvements, as well as add to the scope of the system with 15 more applications, capitalized on software updates from the software vendor, incorporated customer feedback, and staff adopted adoption to improve clarity, simplicity, completeness, accessibility, ease of navigation, responsiveness, transparency, and guidance. This includes modifying instructions to provide examples, simplifying workflows for simple permit requests, provide city standards to ensure completeness of the applicant's submittal, improved bandwidth to the web interface to, so the system itself is faster, provide an application selection guide to direct people to the current application, and incorporate escalations and automated emails to ensure responsiveness, provide all visibility to all application types, providing videos, instructional videos, and update submittal requirement guides. Our implementation of TESSA was not limited to just the software. We made a holistic change. This includes the hardware, the associated data, staff, procedures, and the network, all in an effort to help customers at the counter and online as well. It included improvement to hardware. Our front-counter staff now can directly guide an applicant through the process with our front-counter workstations. We recently were praised by Newport Beach staff who came and toured our setup and gave us kudos for what we've accomplished. We have also improved network bandwidth, continued to train staff, upload historical documents into the system to ensure faster responses to applicants who are inquiring about history of a site, and update procedures to ensure our staff can provide certain and swift responses to the public. One of TESSA's most recent innovations are the Insta-permits. This allows applicants to obtain permits for simple, common projects, such as residential solar or water heater installations, in about 20 minutes. By simplifying these processes, we have saved applicants' time and reduced administrative workloads, allowing staff to focus more on complex cases. Since launch in fall of last year of these Insta-permits, we have received close to 100 Insta-permit applications. These applications will continue to grow as more and more contractors are aware of this option. Continued innovation is key with a system like this. It's definitely with its breadth and its depth, using this powerful resource to help provide the best customer service possible. This includes a recent launch of an application selection guide that asks if you need assistance right when you log in, and if you say yes, ask questions that will ultimately guide you to the correct application you are looking for. Additional innovation is coming with help that will help make markups more clear from city staff, directions and handouts more concise, and reports to ensure performance goals are met, and streamline workflows for applications that will may not be able to be instant for the near future, and can be streamlined, but can be streamlined further to, in the permitting process, to be less cumbersome. We continue to get a variety of requests or feedback from our customers, insights from the reports we can run now with this, and this insights we gain from the customers. We're going to be the impetus for continued change. This feedback is collected by our end-users, shared with our subject matter experts, and added to our TESSA meetings, shared and prioritized by our subject matter experts, so they can identify potential improvements, not just in the department that receive the comment, but throughout all the divisions and departments that work with the system. These improvements are then prioritized and directed to staff to conduct those improvements, especially our IT department, who works tirelessly to keep making sure this system runs at its full function. Since launch, we have completed many modifications in the system to address customer feedback, and our system is better for it. With a system that has over 170 applications, 370 automations, 146 unique automated emails, 49 geographic information layers, we continue to improve the system so it can continue to process thousands of cases and store over 30,000 cases and growing. There will continue to be a substantial amount of work in maintaining and updating the TESSA system, but I believe we're heading in the right direction and providing efficient service. In closing, TESSA represents a monumental step forward for Costa Mesa. Its innovative features and continuous improvements demonstrate our commitment to exceptional customer service. We look forward to further refining the system, guided by feedback from our users, to ensure TESSA continues to meet the needs of businesses, developers, contractors, and property owners. I appreciate your time, and I welcome any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Inloes. Commissioners, any questions? See, Commissioner Martinez? Go ahead.
Of course I have questions. Actually, first I have a request. Can we make sure to take public comment on this item specifically?
Absolutely.
Thank you. First, I wanted to ask, are you aware of the City of Los Angeles system ZEMIS?
Yes.
Yeah, so they have this, when you look at a parcel, it lists out all the different zones or overlays or whatever. I know Los Angeles has a bunch more than we do, but they also list out things like AB 2097 eligibility and things like that, that would, what sites are applicable for different state laws. Is it possible that we, in the future, could have something like that on our system?
Yes.
Great. I wanted to ask about the average time taken to grant a permit. Is that something that TESSA tracks?
Yes, the start time of an application, the end time of an application is recorded as well as several other dates. So, yes, it's something that can be tracked and something that's gathered in performance reports.
And if a application is taking longer than, I don't know, a standard deviation or two, what happens internally if that is the case? Do we say, okay, this one has been taking a bit too long, we're going to focus on this, or what happens internally when we see that happen?
There's a software, and then there's a procedural adjustment. So, the procedural adjustment or address is the supervisor that's responsible for that division, is monitoring the workload of the staff. When he sees a case going longer than it should, he addresses that with the staff and potentially gets involved if necessary. The other The other software solution to that as well that's implemented is escalations. So when a project is sitting for longer than what the due date is, a notification rises to, in several of our cases, rises to the supervisor.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Zick.
Mr. Inlos, a very informative presentation. Thank you for that. On page four, you indicate that there's 14,432 registered customers. Those are people who've logged in, created an account, and used TESSA.
Correct.
You used a reference term where you talked about regular users. So approximately, how many of those 14,000 are what you would call regular users?
That's a great question. I, I do not have the answer to that percentage of, of that 14,000 that are regular users.
If you had to guess? Half?
No.
A thousand?
No, we have several contractors that use the system regularly to pull permits. So I would say, you know, I don't know a number that I'd feel comfortable guessing right now, or it would really be something I'd need to look into and get back to you.
Okay. And of these, these registered users, are they primarily contractors, or do you have a fairly high percentage of property owners, whether that be a homeowner or a business owner?
Yeah, a lot of our applications, all of our, most of our applications for building permits allow for owner, builder, or contractor to pull. There's only some exceptions for Insta-permits or some smaller application types that require contractor to pull it. So there's a mix, definitely, for sure.
So if a, if there's a first-time user that signs up on TESSA, you, you mentioned there's a application selection guide that might help them get to where they're trying to get to. If they get stuck or have questions, how do they get to a, a warm body for assistance if they need that?
Yes. So there's, there's contact, there's a TESSA FAQ page that has contact information. Also, our entire city staff directory is on TESSA. So they can go to any division, any department they want to speak with, and call a number to any one of the staff members.
Okay. And then my last question, you talked a lot about the feedback and, and how you use that and incorporate that into your system processes. How is it that a person provides feedback? Is there a feedback form, or how do they actually do that?
Yeah, so as it currently stands, the feedback processes, if they're coming into the city hall, administration staff has been directed to direct all inquiries or concerns about TESSA to myself and other subject matter experts. If they come in through email, those are also forwarded to that, that core group. And if they're, they call in, they're also forwarded in that way. So there's no one set hotline, they just need to come in and say they want to talk about TESSA, and I'll happily listen.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Inlos. So I had a quick question about just the accessibility of it as far as when you pull it up on the computer or your phone. I have it bookmarked, we're going through a remodel right now, but a lot of times when you type in TESSA just in Google, it brings you back to the applications page where there's not a link to sign in. So then you go back to trending, and that's where the link to sign in is. And so it's just if you could maybe on, on the backend, make it more forward-facing so you get that login page, just a user's comment. I, I, our project started right in the rollout phase of this, so we did go through some growing pains, and it has gotten smoother and more efficient. And it is a good tool. And what I'd like to see is more of the public-facing performance reports, because in, in what I do, we have a lot of, you know, when, when one of our clients comes to us and, and says, well, you know, what does Costa Mesa look like as far as the timeline? We've got our construction loans, and we've got our planning and our scheduling and all that good stuff. Are those statistics and performance reports kind of, are they, are those for the city or are they public-facing?
So there are going to be performance metrics that are going to be posted on the website. We're working on those now, and the goal would be to have those out to the, facing the public in February.
Excellent, excellent. And then you had mentioned there's performance reporting, and you had mentioned that we're, we're making a, a lot of progress on the increase with the efficiency and things like that. Do you have a sort of an estimated timeline for types of things now, or is that still sort of in the process? It's like, do we have, how many are getting done within a, you know, a reasonable period of time, and then how many outliers are there because of maybe an issue with a, a non-project-specific issue, maybe a processing issue or a staffing issue or something like that? Do we have any way of tracking that?
I want to make sure I answer your question. I believe the, the question is, is, you know, how are things looking today, and are we seeing continued improvements? The answer to that is, is, is yes. And the metrics that we'll be placing online, I think we'll continue to demonstrate that as, as we move forward. In regards to the kind of specifics, you know, we have 170-some applications. Some of our applications have moved forward streamlined, no problem, they have everything they need to do well, and then others, you know, are obviously going through a little bit more of a transitionary phase. So I think it's, all depends on which application, and we're trying to monitor all of them.
Excellent, excellent. And, and it, it helps us understand too, because for instance, like on, on my project, when there was a question and I couldn't figure it out on TESSA, whether it's my own user error or whatever, I would reach out to Natalie, who was extremely helpful, so there's a good point of contact. So, but in order to reduce that amount of, of burden on the staff of having to answer a bunch of phone calls or individual emails about project status, I think that status thing is what everybody's screaming for, kind of like, and it does tell you where you are in the process on your thing, but sometimes it's a little ambiguous about what needs to be done, right? Or, or things like that. So, and I have seen an improvement, so I'm not, this isn't a criticism, but just that transparency so you don't have to pick up the phone and call Natalie and stop her from whatever else she's doing or whoever the staff member assigned is. And then, yeah, I, I think that the parcel information, as Commissioner Martinez talked about, it's one of the most useful tools for the public and everybody else. Laguna Beach has a great one, ZEMUS is fantastic, LA County has a similar one, where you can just pull up a parcel, you get the zoning, you get all the, whether it's in coastal act, whether it's a hillside, whether it's any of those things. So I think getting that quicker would be better.
No, we've already seen massive improvements. I mean, the fact that zoning and verification letters have dropped by 66% shows that we're providing a substantial amount of information to the public. We're going through a vetting process to make sure the layers that are on there are accurate, because obviously there's no, no, there's potentially no opportunity for human inter- interface, right? So if someone takes that as gospel and moves on, we want to make sure that we're giving them accurate information before we load those layers up. But those layers are continuing to populate as they're ready. We have 44 now, and we're, we're going to be adding them as we can. I also appreciate the, the point you made about making sure that it's, the public's aware that in any application that you're submitted, there is a status line that does tell them the, the status of their, their project, and it does, shows a workflow that shows how they're moving through the steps and what step they're on and what step they're moving to next. But you're absolutely right, that, that more clarity in guiding people through an automated system is, is always going to be key.
Yeah, and I think one of the hiccups we were having is that it was automatically routing, like, simple communications to everybody for approval. And I know that's been smoothed out, but, but it's helpful to have someone on the backend who's sort of kind of marshaling that and uses the supervisor. Okay. All right, great. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one question, Dan. On slide three of the presentation, there's a note that there's been a greater efficiency, 30% decrease in processing. So how, how is that calculated, and where do we get the baseline for that?
So we measured the first three months of the launch of the system against the last three months, and, and processing time from a building permit being submitted to its conclusion of a final inspection. And so taking the average of the cases that occurred in the first three months, comparing it to the average of the cases in the last three months, we've been 30% more efficient.
Okay. So it, it doesn't necessarily account for type of permit or application, it's just a aggregate?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Oh, and, and to that point, Harlan, we looked at them separately in groups of cases, and it all seemed to bear around 30%, but the aggregate was 30% in total.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more questions on the dais, I'd like to open this up for public comment. So if there's anyone in chambers, please come down to a lectern.
Good evening. Planning Commission staff, thank you guys all for your time. I just had a couple of comments and experiences that I wanted to share, and I will start with kind of, this is not, anything I'm saying is not an indictment on staff. We have some of the best people working in our city possible. There are several people who, without them, I don't think I would still have hair. So this is not an indictment on staff whatsoever. Six of the last six permits that I've pulled within the city since TESSA has been implemented have not been fully closed out, meaning we've done our final inspection, but somehow it didn't get closed out in the system. So I'm kind of, and then two, three of these almost led to me getting sued, two of them almost led to me losing property insurance. It's a significant issue. As I worked through with city staff to figure these things out, it was told to me that there are currently about 400 mysteriously non-closed-out applications, or sorry, permits. So I, I kind of am a little curious about the timelines on these things, that there's such a large amount that haven't been closed out. What I was also told is about 20, I, I believe it's each building technician is supposed to close out 20 additional of these unknown permit issues, and this problem's been on since I identified it in December of last year, or '24. So there was likely, you know, hundreds or thousands of more unclosed-out permits. It currently takes approximately six months to get a kitchen remodel permit pulled in the City of Costa Mesa in Newport Beach. I am going to be one month to get a, a bootleg ADU legalized. Sorry, not legalized permit pull. We have some process issues that we need to work through, and I think it would be great. I volunteered this many, many times after hiccups on several different projects, that we have a, a task force, if you will, of recurring users, staff of, from each department to kind of work through some of these processes and make sure that these things are working out, because it, it's really, there's something broken that we need to fix. Thank you everyone for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I think it's a new day in Costa Mesa. From what I'm hearing from staff, you're asking all the right questions. Maybe it's the DOGE influence, maybe it's LA fires recognizing that it's government that's the issue, and the government needs to get out of the way here. You know, I guess I didn't really learn anything from the staff report today, so I'm really excited about your questions that extracted the really valuable information. Commissioner Martinez, awesome questions. I too use other city systems that just have more robust data, but I didn't hear the when that would be available. I heard it was coming. So, you know, feedback, I don't know, you know, I'm an international business executive. I launched the technology internationally for a New York stock exchange company with P and L responsibility. My feedback went into a black hole. I saw the people that should have been responding to me out filling jars with TESSA pens and lollipops, right? So I'm not sure who's giving this feedback and who it's been receiving. I just heard a great thing that I've been championing for the last year, let's get these heavy users in a room together to help the city, right? There's an ivory tower mentality here with some wonderful exceptions in staff, really wonderful exceptions. We have a culture of bad communication. When an email or a voicemail or anything, it's an option whether you get back. And even if you leave multiple emails and multiple things, I, I can't tell you how many times I have to go stand in the lobby to get somebody to come out and answer my questions, right? So I don't see what's in here. I don't, I, I agree with the prior speaker, the system is broken. I didn't hear that from the, from the presentation. I can tell you just, so historically, when they launched TESSA, guess what? The legacy system, Permits Plus, did not automatically update TESSA, and nobody knew it until it launched. So they had to manually update everything, right? TESSA just is so void of necessary information, business, simple business license. Just today, I had to put in two public records requests and waste staff's time on really important things for some of my projects. Today, just two public records requests because TESSA is insufficient. I didn't hear that from the presentation today. Streamlining process, I don't know. I had one poor neighbor call me, took a year to get a building permit issued on an ADU for 225 square foot. How is this city ever going to build housing when they can't get a simple ADU processed in a year? I don't see, I sit on the fourth floor, on the second floor, all the time waiting for staff to come out. I hear the same people coming to the counters, asking the same questions over and over again. I don't see anyone innovating and saying, hey, I got an idea, there's a bottleneck, everyone asks the same question, let's put it out on TESSA to make sure that something like the MEP for fixture count, which is how the city determines fees, should be asked upfront. Now you've got to wait two or three, after like nine months, you've got to wait another two or three weeks because you didn't know you had to fill out something like that. The process is broken. We have some great staff. Thank you for, for caring about this. We need to fix it.
Thank you. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. And any last questions? Nope. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Inlos. Let's move on to the next item, public comments for matters not listed on the agenda. These are items that are within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. I'll open it up for public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. If you're participating by Zoom or the phone, use the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen. If you're joining the meeting on your phone, use star nine when you're called on. All right, Mr. Toler. Go ahead.
There we go. Okay. I just wanted to say goodbye to you all. I want to, I'm still going to be around, you'll see my face, but I want to say it was a pleasure working with those of you that are still up there that I worked with, and to Chair Erith. Thank you to staff for all the help. You guys were always great to work with. I think you guys are going to do a great job. I wish you the best. I think this term is, I mean, the next four years are going to be critically important in the life of our city because now we're going to, now that I'm off, we're going to do the fun part where we do the rezoning and stuff we've been talking about for five years or so. So we can grow poorly, or we can grow well. We can resist change and get yanked around by the state, or we can embrace change and think through together what it means for Costa Mesa to be the best version of itself for this time in our life in the 21st century. So I wish you the best. I have some ideas of what that might look like, what that might mean practically, and so I look forward to sharing that with you from down here, three minutes at a time. So that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no one else in chambers. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. We will close public comment then. That moves us on to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions. So let's start to my far right. Commissioner Rojas.
Actually, yeah, I do have a few comments. Obviously, I'd like to say thank you to Adam for his leadership formally as well, and also Commissioner Toler for all the time you spent up here with us and all the feedback you gave us. I think it was, it was great to hear different perspectives of what we had available. And also, I just, you know, as I'm sitting here thinking as we do what we do for our city of Costa Mesa, my mind obviously goes to our fellow Southern Californians in, in the fires and whatnot. I grew up in Pasadena and, you know, know a lot of people that were impacted, so my heart goes out to them, and all the best to those in the city of, of Los Angeles that are impacted by the fires. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Klepek.
Yeah, welcome to our new commissioners. I'm very excited to be serving with you. And thanks to Chair Erith and Commissioner Toler, Vice Chair Toler. Really appreciated working with you and how they welcomed me when I joined, and I'm just very excited for our new leadership and differing views that you both bring to the table.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Andrade.
Yes, just happy 2025, excited to be, continue to serve the Planning Commission and the City of Costa Mesa in another, to wrap up the term, so really excited to what's coming forward.
Okay. Let me jump over here to my left. Commissioner Martinez.
Yes, first the usual announcements of events. Tomorrow at 5:00 PM, note, 5:00 PM, not 6:00 PM, the city council will hold a special meeting in which they will be talking about, for one of the items, the Fairview Park Master Plan. So if you're interested in Fairview Park, please do attend tomorrow night. And speaking of park master plans, on the 15th, I attended OC Parks's community meeting on the Talbert Park Master Plan. It was very informative. They have a new master plan, they're working on their master plan, we're working on Fairview Parks's. The MRCA, MCR, one of the two, is working on the Randall Preserve plans, so it's a very good time for park master plans. You can find the Talbert Regional Park Master Plan online, and if you have any comments, you can send them to taremasterplan@ocparks.com. Okay, I wanted to congratulate and really welcome back our new commissioners. So. our new commissioners. So, welcome. And I wanted to say thank you to Vice Chair Toller. When I first joined the commission, he was very helpful. He really instructed me, and he really guided me. And I'm very appreciative of all the work that you've done and that we've done together. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm very glad to be back here, and I'm very much looking forward to working with the entire commission and getting to know everyone. I had an opportunity to meet Commissioner Martinez and butchered his name horribly on last Tuesday after a long evening. And I'm very encouraged to see former Commissioner Toller here, former Chair Fitzpatrick, and I was glad to hear Commissioner Vivar call in. You know, what makes Costa Mesa great is we're a very diverse community, and we have a lot of different views about what makes Costa Mesa special and what we want to do with Costa Mesa. And I think that having a commission of people from all different orientations and political opinions and strong opinions about how the city moves forward is how we create a great city. We collaborate and work together, and I'm really looking forward to that. So I'm very excited that we have the leadership we do. Commissioner, we don't have anybody more experienced than Commissioner Harland or Chair Harland, former city council members. We have that perspective, which I think is really important going into this critical part. And Vice Chair Zick, who I wanted to nominate as chair just by virtue of tenure and experience, and, but I think this is going to be a very exciting time for the commission, as former Commissioner Toller said. And when I first got on the commission back in 2011, there was a gentleman named Peter Nagavi, who used to be the Development Services Director, and he said something along the lines of what Commissioner Toller said. Either you determine your own development and your growth, or the state will do it for you. So I'm looking forward to this time on the commission, and I think it's going to be very productive, and I'm looking forward to all the discussions and making things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you. I don't think I could come up with too much of a better message than what I just heard from Commissioner Dixon. Certainly, it's a diverse community. It's definitely a diverse commission. I appreciate that, and I'm excited about the next four years. I'm disheartened when we don't have a lot of the public here, and I'm heartened when we do have a lot of the public here. And if there was something I would wish for in the next four years, it would be that we have more people from the public here and engaged, so that along with our diverse opinions, we actually get a mix of what the community feels and wants to tell us, more than just once every two years. So, and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues this evening.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. For my part, I want to start off first by thanking former Chair Adam Erith and Commissioner Toller. Both of them are dedicated public servants. I think that's even somewhat of an understatement. I really appreciated Chairman Erith's ability to run the meetings, to give people opportunities to speak, be respectful of the public and the applicants and staff, and he's a thoughtful administrator. For Commissioner Toller, I was very pleased to nominate him for planning commission. I think it was one of the more important decisions early in my tenure, and I've been very pleased with what he's been able to accomplish on, on this commission. I think he's an incredibly thoughtful and dedicated and knowledgeable commissioner. Aside from just being an all-around good guy, he knows what he's talking about. He puts in the effort and has come up with some creative ideas. I have no doubt, Russell, that you'll be, continue to be involved. And sometimes it's actually even nicer to be on the other side of the dais to do that kind of work. I appreciate very much everyone's vote of confidence for me to, to serve as chair here. I'm very comfortable in this council chambers, but you, most part, are very new to me. So I'm going to look forward to spending more time with my colleagues, getting to know you and your perspective. Some I already know. Vice Chair Zick, and I served four years up here. So it's good to be back with you. You know, I think, as was stated earlier, we, we do have really a lot of important work ahead of us. In fact, that was one of the main reasons that I wanted to serve on the commission again, is I know how important development and housing issues are here, and there's no better place than to, to try and affect that kind of change from this dais. So I want to thank everybody for the, like I said, the, the vote of confidence. I, I will promise to run things as smoothly as I can. This is important that we not only do our work here, but have lives outside. So no extended meetings, and I'll be working obviously closely with staff to make sure that we, we accomplish that. All right, moving on. We have consent calendar, one item on the consent calendar tonight. It's considered to be routine. It will be act on in one motion. Be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the planning commission staff or the public request the specific item to be discussed or removed. Items removed from the consent calendar will be discussed and voted on immediately following the planning commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar. So Anna, will you read the item?
Consent calendar, item number one, minutes. December 9, 2024 unofficial meeting minutes.
Anybody want to pull this, or has anybody from the public pulled it?
No, they have not.
Okay. I will be abstaining from this vote, since I can't participate in meetings prior to being seated here. I don't know if anybody else is doing the same, but let's, do I have a motion? Vice Chair Zick.
I move to approve.
Okay. And the second by Commissioner Andrade. Let's call for the question.
That motion carries five, two, with Commissioner, or Chair Harland and Commissioner Dixon abstaining.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, we have one public hearing tonight. Anna, could you please read the title for public hearing, item number one?
Public hearing, item number one, presentation pertaining to the update of the city's accessory dwelling unit ADU provisions to conform with recent revisions to state law. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any ex parte communications? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Yeager, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chair Harland and Commissioners. Just want to make note, we did receive one public comment towards the end of the day, and that was a letter, which I have here somewhere, a letter from the California Housing Defense Fund. So the, the presentation tonight, this is in regards to our upcoming ADU ordinance, which would be updating the code to comply with state law, which were recently adopted, and for clarifications of any existing issues. So basically, what is a ADU? The city has historically allowed accessory dwelling units and other similar uses, like granny flats, as either permitted or conditionally permitted uses. Currently, the city allows ADUs on all residentially zoned lots, and these can be established through either new construction or conversion of existing structures. ADUs, they are subject to specific development standards, which includes the total number of ADUs, floor area setbacks, and height. And in regulating ADUs, the city intends to ensure that ADUs can remain accessory uses to single and multifamily residential uses, and to ensure that they do not adversely impact neighboring residents or the community. So the, this has been about a five-year road with the ADU ordinance. Back in 2019, the city adopted urgency ordinance to, basically to get the state mandates into effect on January 1, 2020, which is when ADUs were required statewide. Since then, we've had a couple ADU ordinance updates, and then the upcoming ordinance update would be the third. So this does all spur from new state laws and a letter that HCD sent back in September. The letter did go through our 2023 ordinance and outline areas in which HCD believed that our code was not consistent with state law. These new state laws, there's a, there's a lot of them. Three specifically that we'll be focusing on are SB 477, SB 1211, and AB 2533. SB 477 didn't do much to the meat of the government code in regards to ADUs, but did renumber the code section completely. SB 1211, this bill provides a lot more flexibility for developing ADUs on multifamily properties. First, it allows demolition of both covered and uncovered parking in conjunction with ADUs. Previously, it was just garage and covered parking. And the bill also increased the number of detached ADUs permitted on multifamily lots from two up to eight ADUs, provided that that number of ADUs doesn't exceed the existing number of units. AB 2533, this bill focused on legalization of unpermitted ADUs and junior ADUs, which were constructed before 2020. Essentially, as long as a property owner can show that it was built before 2020, and it can be brought up to current building code, then we can approve it. So overall, there's a few major changes going on in the ordinance, specifically the number of permitted ADUs is increasing. The size of multifamily ADUs is changing. Various development standards are being changed and addressed, and parking replacement is also being addressed. So in terms of the number of ADUs allowed, the single-family dwelling properties are permitted to have one ADU and one junior accessory dwelling unit with our current code. HCD's letter indicated that we need to allow one conversion ADU within the existing home, one junior ADU, and then in addition, one detached ADU. So that would be two ADUs, one junior ADU, and one main unit. Multifamily dwelling properties, as mentioned before, you were previously allowed to have two detached ADUs on the lot, and you would also be eligible to have non-habitable or non-livable space to be converted to ADUs, provided that that space doesn't result in more than, more ADUs than 25% of the existing units. So the conversion ADU stays the same with the new code. However, the eight ADUs would now be allowed to be on multifamily properties. Again, provided that those ADUs did not exceed the existing number of units. The other change here is that a new multifamily dwelling would be eligible to construct an ADU within the dwelling, which was previously not allowed. In terms of square footage, the city has required that multifamily dwelling detached ADUs, they could be 800 square feet if they were providing more than one ADU, or 1,200 square feet if they were only providing one. Pursuant to HCD's letter, that needs to change to comply with the government code, which would change to allowing for 850 square foot detached ADUs, or 1,000 square foot for ADU with more than one bedroom. Otherwise, square footages are not proposed to change. The state mandates specific ADUs and what we can review for them. All converted accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, regardless of if it's on a single-family or multifamily property. We have no regulation in those standards, except requiring that they have separate exterior access. So if they are going into a structure which exceeds the maximum height in the city, they could do that. If they're going into a structure which doesn't comply with exist, or required setbacks, it could do that. Otherwise, the city would not be eligible to provide any other standards for those. In addition, the state has mandated 800 square foot new construction detached ADUs be allowed by right in single-family dwelling properties, provided that they have four-foot side and rear setbacks, and provided that they provide the height required, which in Costa Mesa allows for a maximum height of 27 feet. Detached ADUs, multifamily, same standards, all we can regulate is four-foot side and rear setbacks, and then the, the height requirement. So the government code also limits local ADU review to objective standards for the ADUs, which we can apply standards to. In order to comply with state law and to remove any subjectivity modifications to the ordinance are proposed to ensure this objectivity. As proposed, both attached and detached ADUs would be required to match the materials of, and finishes and colors of the main residence. And in addition, any, excuse me, and as noted before, the conversion units, all we can require is separate external access. So previous standards which applied to internal conversions, like requiring that garage doors include windows and doors in the place of the garage door, can now not be enforced by the city. So that standard still exists in the ordinance, but is now a recommendation. And in regards to parking, as noted before, current code allows for garages and carports to be removed without replacement parking if the ADU is constructed within the area where that garage or carport was. And the new updated code includes any type of parking space, whether it's garage, carport, or open parking. HCD's letter indicated that the, the city cannot allow, or the city must allow short-term rentals and junior accessory dwelling units. City staff believes that allowing these JADUs to be used as short-term rentals would reduce the number of housing units available in the city. And pursuant to the purpose of the government code, ADUs and JADUs are valuable forms of housing. They provide housing for family members and at-risk people. They increase the housing stock. So with all of this preamble to the ADU code, the staff does not believe that JADUs should be used for short-term rentals. So that's allowed by HCD. We just need to include those findings in our ordinance findings. The city is pursuing a variety of other ADU programs. On January 1, we launched our ADU legalization program. This is, there's a website online which outlines everything that any applicant or resident would need to submit with their application. But basically, if you constructed your ADU prior to January 1, 2020, and it may not comply with all zoning standards, we can still approve that ADU, provided that it be brought up to building and safety standards. In addition, we launched our pre-engineered ADU program. This allows for approvals of ADUs before residents choose to use them. So architects can submit their designs to the city, or review it for building and safety purposes, and then we will post it on our city website with directions for the applicants to reach out to that architect. Essentially, it should reduce the amount of time for residents to get an ADU permit, and theoretically, if it's being produced at scale by the architect, it should reduce the cost for them as well. Currently, the city has seven permits which have been submitted. Once they are approved, we would get them posted online. So tonight, the purpose it is just to receive the presentation, ask any questions, and provide any comments that you have about the ordinance. Staff, we will be returning back in February for a recommendation on the proposed ordinance, and we're, we're happy to incorporate any comments as needed. So that ends my presentation. I'm here to answer questions if needed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yeager. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Martinez?
All right. First, I'll ask some general questions, and then I'm going to go roughly line by line through the proposed ordinance, and during that part, if any other commissioner wants to tag along. So first, I want to set the scope of this ordinance and how big of a thing we're talking about. How many ADUs did we permit in the last year?
Great question. So last year, in 2023, 128 ADU permits were submitted, and the city issued 87 permits.
All right. And how many non-AD units did we approve?
So there were approximately 234 units which were approved, some of which would include reconstructed residences. So... So in terms of new units, we could get that data and provide it at a subsequent hearing.
All right. So very roughly, this is about a third of housing units that are produced annually that this ordinance affects, right? Roughly a third?
Last year, yes.
Okay. So very big deal. How often do submitted ADUs, ADU designs not meet the city requirements, and then we send them back to an applicant, and we're like redo something?
So it does happen. We do encourage applicants to work with city staff before they get their drawings completely final, just to ensure that they do meet all the requirements necessary. I don't have data on the percentage of permits which require that, but the ones that come across my desk, I would say the majority are in line with our code.
Yeah, because any, any delay, you know, costs more as a delay in a housing unit that we could have. Have we solicited or have we received feedback on this ordinance or on any ways that this ordinance hinders ADU builders?
So the, the city has not solicited input from architects or designers, anything like that. However, we do take input whenever it is offered. And we did work with a couple ADU firms when we were planning for the pre-engineered ADU program.
Okay. Has input you've received, is there anything of note, anything that stands out?
I, it's hard to say. I mean, a lot of input that comes across the table, it's just people not liking the standards that are in front of them. However, there, there has been valuable feedback, I think, working with these ADU firms for the pre-engineered ADU. It did, did help us out with that process.
Okay. And then last general one, what would happen if we threw out this entire section, 1335, if we didn't have it in our municipal code?
The, the city would defer any of its potential rights and, and these, excuse me, the, basically, our code, if it was thrown out, we would defer to the government code.
Would that be more permissive for ADUs or less permissive?
In some ways, the city's code is more permissive. Specifically, we allow for higher, higher heights, up to 27 feet, which is the allowed across the board in residential zones in the city. We don't require parking on any ADUs across the city. So it would be more restrictive, essentially.
Okay. All right. Now I'm going to start going roughly line by line. I'll start with B for B, I guess 1335B for B. That's multifamily junior ADUs. Are there any lots in Costa Mesa that are zoned for single-family but have multiple units?
Yes.
Yes. So how is HCD concern number four, which states that the, any, any lot that is zoned for single-family has to be, has to allow JADUs, not just if it has a single-family residence, but if it's zoned for a single-family? How is that concern satisfied, I guess, satisfied by the lack of change really to this section?
So the, the government code, it kind of works in two pieces. You, you need to have a project which is zoned for residential, and then you also have to have residential built on that site. So the ADU standards apply to what is built on the site. So in your example here, if there's multiple single-family dwellings on the property, HCD's ADU handbook says that one of those single-family dwellings could have a JADU in it.
Okay. So only one of the, of the houses on those, that parcel can have it?
If there was a duplex on that lot, so if there was a lot with two units touching each other, the government codes has that you cannot have a single JADU on the property.
Okay. I would just double-check HCD's interpretation, because their letter made it seem like we must allow it on any parcel that's zoned, single-family. Okay. B for B1, which is on the same page, page three of the ordinance. Would this section allow for workspace in a live-work to be converted into an ADU?
Any, any property that is zoned for residential or mixed use is eligible to have ADUs. So if it's a freestanding live-work, then it would be eligible to have ADUs pursuant to single-family development.
Okay. I'm asking for this section specifically because it's referring to non-livable space. So would like the workspace in a live-work be considered non-livable space?
It's possible. We would have to look into it and look at definitions.
Okay. Are live-work communities considered multifamily, or is each house considered a single-family home?
So the, in most cases, live-work developments are condoized, so that's multiple single-family dwellings on one property.
Okay. So then it would fall under this, this B section here? B, B for B1 and B for B2 reference limits of 25% of total units or eight new units. Is that something that can be changed by the city to be more permissive?
The government code allows a city to adopt more permissive ADU standards.
B2 and B7, so I know I went back a little bit, but I also went down, both reference the underlying zone that ADUs are built on. In the public comment letter we received, it was noted that ADUs built under section 66323 of the government code essentially can't have any standards attached to them. So could you confirm that sections B2 and B7 will not apply to 66323 ADUs?
So the applicant, the, the letter you received, we were able to review it. However, it was not incorporated into any of the documents at this point. So we will, we will have to dive deeper into that when we do return to you. That being said, as you noted there in B2, the underlying zone, that, that section should be stricken, stricken from the code, and it will be in subsequent versions that come to you.
Good.
In terms of B7.
B7B.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll look at the same thing there.
Roughly the same comment for B5A1 and B5B1, which is 66323 units. This one was specifically called out in HCD concern number six. HCD said if there are 66323 unit, they should have no standards whatsoever that the city imposes. I don't see anything in B5 that addresses that, so I wanted to ask if that will be incorporated in future amendments.
So the, that section, it is specifically addressed in section D. So it's at the bottom of page six. Development standards.
Yeah.
Should not procure, should not preclude units built subject to government code 66323, and then it lists out the specific units. The intent of that section is to infer that those types of ADUs, the development standards would not apply to.
So even if it's in B5A or B, D will, will override those, those requirements?
So the, the maximum size is allowed there. Applicants are permitted to submit ADUs for larger than the 800 square feet allowed by those mandated units. If they submit those 801-square-foot units, then it would, all of the development standards would apply.
Okay. Such as those listed in B5?
Correct.
Okay. B6, efficiency units. Haven't really heard anything about this. Do we promote this at all, or do we just let developers figure it out?
The only experience I've had with anyone inquiring about efficiency units at the counter was someone who wanted to convert their shed into an ADU. So we're, we're happy to allow efficiency units as permitted by the code. It's just not really advertised, I guess. Yeah, please.
If I may, Commissioner Martinez, we've also been working with a handful of architects and contractors for a pre-approved ADU program, and they've been willing to work with us. We've recommended a range of different sizes. So as part of that, we've tried to encourage, you know, ADUs that are in the 200, 300 square feet that could maybe qualify as an efficiency ADU, and also larger ADU, so that residents have those options moving forward with an easier approval process.
Yeah. When I first saw, and then read about efficiency units, I thought it was really interesting. The, not government code, but the health and safety code section references that a city will not limit the number of efficiency units, but then it goes on to say like, oh, but density will still apply. So it's not like someone can just build a tower of efficiency units somewhere. Okay. C3 on page six, we still have an owner occupancy requirement for JADUs. Why is that?
Well, first, the government code allows for it. And second, the intent is, is that junior ADUs, in a lot of cases, they share facilities with the main unit. So they are allowed to share bathroom facilities, and in many cases, they have a door into the main unit. So in a lot of cases, you see this as more of a family sharing. But in terms of the why is it in here, the government code allows for it, and it's been practice of the city in the past.
D3 and D5A both prohibit sales of ADUs and JADUs separately from the primary residence. Recently, Assembly Bill 1033 allowed for local governments to allow the sale of these ADUs separately. Have we worked on an ordinance to do that?
Staff has started looking into the feasibility of an ordinance, but nothing has been directed yet.
Okay. I feel like since I am in the seat of the council member who very frequently references homeownership, I feel, I felt like I should have brought that up. Yeah. D5, why do we require recorded covenants? What's, what's the point of that?
The, the intent of the covenant is to run with the land, so future homeowners would be aware of the restrictions placed on their ADU or JADU.
Are those restrictions not already in our code?
Yes, but the code changes over time, and the restrictions would be maintained on there. So the, just in terms of the restrictions, as you noted in the, the letter we received earlier, they did inquire about the legality of including the restrictions. So city staff, we will be looking at that as well before we come back for the recommendation.
D9A1, page nine. Why do we require 25-foot setbacks for second stories?
The, the intent in that section was to encourage balconies at the front of these units. And the, the reasoning there is, in a lot of cases, these ADUs have no outdoor space. So the city felt that if we put this requirement in there, it would encourage balconies, which would then give the ADUs their own private outdoor space.
D10, why are we requiring that exterior stairways not be visible?
The, the previous ordinance included that language as an aesthetic reason. Discussions were, were had about not plastering a stairwell on the front of a building.
D12, recommended garage conversion design considerations. Is it normal to have recommendations in our code and not something that we enforce?
Well, it is unusual. The government code has stripped the city's ability to regulate any conversion ADUs, and the city sees value in requiring the articulations and the no-blank facades as this recommends. However, the state will tell you that we cannot enforce anything with this.
Yeah. Okay. And things that are not in the code, do we need to include the 60-day permitting shot clock in our, in our code?
Do we need to? I would defer that to the city attorney. Can you repeat the question?
State law requires that an ADU be permitted within 60 days of it being requested. Do we need to include that requirement from state law in our code?
It's not legally necessary to include it in state law, in the state law, in the code, but it is the law. It could be included for reference, but that is the current law. If the state law were to change, then city code would need to change if it included that provision.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Martinez, the, the state law stipulates that a city must either approve or deny a permit within 60 days of it being considered complete. So there's a little nuance there in that it is 60 days of it being completed, not being submitted.
Of the permit application being completed, or the ADU?
The application being complete, so all of the documentation is in order.
Got it. And then last question, when are the pre-engineered ADUs going to be available?
As soon as we approve them, we're going to post them online.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Anyone else have questions? No? Commissioner Dixon?
Just a very quick comment on, on page 11, just to close up that, on the bottom, the last sentence or the, when a parking space or a parking structure, and it strike out existing garage, and then you move down, it's like, EG, the definition of driveway in section 136. We just need to close up that paren, just to make that a little more clear where we're starting the next one. And then do we need to change the, the wording for garage throughout that section to more conform with parking space or parking structure, just so we don't have any confusion on the nomenclature there? That was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right. I just have one or two quick questions or comments, Mr. Yeager. So I think it starts with the pre-approved plans. So is, is the city's intent to offer something that's pre-approved ministerial, and then alternatively say, if you want a more custom approach, this is what you have to go through, right?
Correct.
Are the custom plans, I know you mentioned talking to architects and designers and contractors, but have you, are any of these plans intended to be like off-the-shelf products? I mean, there's so many different companies that offer pre-made, prefab, so would those be consistent?
I'm, I'm not sure if I understand your question.
So are all the, the pre-approved engineered plans, are those, let's just say, are those custom designs at this point that are acceptable? Or are they, for example, and I can't even think of a name off the top of my head, but there's so many companies that offer like 180 square foot, yeah, would the, are those options as well?
The short answer is yes. We, we are encouraging that these ADUs coming in, they propose it with multiple designs as well. So if you have your 350-square-foot ADU in a Mediterranean-style, modern style, more cottage style, just so it can closely match residents as well.
Okay.
If, if they did not do that, and they only did it in one style, and an applicant wanted it in a differ, different kind, then they would have to go through this whole process.
Right. I mean, I, I suspect that most people, and I've looked into doing an ADU as well, would look at a kind of a prefab option and not necessarily run to an architect or a designer just for cost purposes. And if it in fact was something that was feasible, that can be tweaked in some ways, and the city could approve it ministerially, that's a much better option than hiring a designer, hiring a separate contractor. Of course, site prep, you're going to have to hire contractors anyway, but... Of course, site prep, you're going to have to hire contractors anyway, but I think that the easiest way to do things usually is the preferred way.
Yes, and we have approved multiple prefab ADUs.
Okay. Great. All right, commissioners, any other?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah. So you mentioned that pre-2020, there's been some... Many ADUs have gone through, so I'm curious, what are the plans for the city to have those pre-approved ADUs bring him up to the new code? What's the process look like?
So the... Each... There's the triennial building code cycle. These would only be valid through that cycle because the building code would change. So if they're posted online with the previous cycle, then those plans wouldn't... They would have to be resubmitted with the most updated building code requirements.
Okay. And then just a quick forecast, because I appreciate the... Keeping the... Or the expectation, right, to make sure that these are not... Don't become short-term rentals, because I know that we count this towards our housing requirements. So with this, much more... Greater flexibility and accessibility to expand and the number of ADUs that can be built on a property. What is your forecast of how will this help the city in meeting their housing requirements?
That's a great question. A little bit nuanced, and we're hopefully trying to get some of that information this year. HCD previously had made an interpretation that ADUs could be considered low-income or, in some cases, very low-income units. They are now asking for more justification for that. So proof that... Of rental income being gathered for an ADU, or confirmation if a family member's going to live in it. So we're in the process right now of conducting a survey for last year's ADUs and getting that information from applicants. Moving forward, we're going to set up a process where, as an applicant goes through that ADU process, they will fill out some type of, like, questionnaire or survey to give us that information. So hopefully, moving forward, we'll actually have a little bit better of an understanding of where these units really fall towards meeting our arena. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that information for you when we come back in April. And I think moving forward, it'll hopefully be more accurate year on year as we get this information.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dixon?
I just had a quick follow-up to your question. We use the Westside Plans as a kind of a baseline for our architect to sort of move forward on our stuff. So is there... I was trying to think of a mechanism that's not going to bog down staff in reviewing the prefab ones, you know, the... But if there's a way, and not to market any particular companies, but maybe have a way for them to submit their design or whatever plan, and then staff can then say, you know, all of these 100 designs meet our criteria. Just something to make it a little easier for the public when they're trying to decide what to do. Right? Because... And so it's just a thought. I'm not sure if that's feasible. I'm not sure if that's something staff wants to engage in or whatever, but just maybe to kind of survey what's out there on the market and say, you know, here are all these prefab plans. These are the ones that meet our requirements, kind of deal. Maybe upfront, instead of them coming to you and saying, does this? And then that kind of deal.
Yeah. That's a great comment. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're tapped out on questions up here. I'll open it up for public comment now, if there's anybody in the chambers who wants to speak. No? Too far of a walk up here? Okay.
I am just... So I was trying to...
Okay. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
Yes, we do. Call-in user ending in 613, you may provide your public comment.
Yes, hi. Good evening. So I'd like the city council, or, I'm sorry, Planning Commission, to keep in mind that ADUs are essentially multi-unit, and these are investments. I can speak for myself personally. I've built an ADU on my property, and I went to great lengths to ensure that my neighbors weren't impacted by exterior stairs, so I do appreciate that. There needs to be standards for building in this city. I'd hate to see them lowered in the unnecessary rates of housing differences that doesn't exist. But again, these are... These projects are going to be... I don't see them being for low-income. It's going to be the owner trying to build something so they can create a visceral revenue on their property. And I think that we need to be aware of that moving forward. If not... People aren't going to be optimistic for this, they're looking at the bottom line. Also, speaking from experience, it's insanely expensive to build one of these. The prefab problems with those is they don't really match what's going on, but I... From what I can tell, appearance isn't something that the law really cares about. But, you know, moving forward, I'd like to hear that you guys are doing everything possible to protect the integrity of a neighborhood, make sure that there are some design standards, meaning that, you know, the ADU is complementary to the house. They at least look like they were built as a... How do you say? Complements of each other, as opposed to some that I've seen, especially in Mesa del Mar. I've seen some that just look absolutely terrible, that don't have any connection to the existing residents on the property. You... If you're looking to get more of these built, I think you need to go talk to the county, the county sewer. That's a huge hurdle, as well as the Mesa Water Department. Mesa Water Department is not very good at getting these things through, and they don't keep very good records. And they tend to choose a story with what you're doing, as opposed to seeing what they have the undocumented, as documented. But again, please realize that these are investments, and people are going to be doing this to make money. And keeping that in mind, let's have some standards for these things as much as we can, and I think that that'll help at least maintain some of the character of the city. I know it's just going to destroy the city, and hopefully, we can at least have it go in the right direction, or at least... Kind of a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see no other people. I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, any other comments, suggestions? I know it says here there's a recommendations, just basically receive and file. So Mr. Drapkin, we can just end the hearing at this point? Okay. Great. All right. Lastly, we have no old business, no new business. Let's go to departmental reports from Public Services. Mr. Yang?
Thank you, Chairman Harland. So no reports from Public Works, other than to congratulate the appointees and reappointees of the Planning Commission, and congratulations to Chair Harland and Vice Chair Sack. So I defer back to the chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Yang. Mr. Drapkin, Development Services report?
No reports tonight, sir.
Okay. And then lastly, Mr. Preziosi, anything from the city attorney?
No report, Chair Harland. Just want to welcome back all commissioners.
All right. Great. Well, all that's left is adjourning the meeting. So thank you, everyone, and have a good night.